Thank you. My message running here, I had banned Brown. Like I said.
You know, I missed out.
How do you want to ban it? I'm telling that. Frank, you on the board? So why did I sit down a thing today? So when are y'all meeting? I don't think you're nothing but. No board meeting or anything. Do you go?
You can do it soon.
Okay.
Now, you're on the board.
I'm on board now.
That's right. Because Sean came. We had assumed you were working with two of us.
Oh, okay. I see. They seem to listen. Everything started. Yeah.
I'm ready. You see, so. I want to call this work session meeting into order. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here today. This work session is important. Is an important opportunity for us to come together and discuss and propose county budget in a collaborative and productive way. Our purpose today is to focus on the overall directions, priorities, and structure of the budget. This was not. This will not be a line by line interview. Instead, we'll take a broader view, looking at how the proposed budget aligns with our goals for the county and where we may need to make adjustment. If you have detailed questions about specific line items, I encourage you to schedule an individual appointment with county staff to go over those areas more thoroughly. This will keep our time today focused and efficient for everyone. Again, thank you for continued dedication and partnership in this process. So let's get started. Right now, we're going to have the overview of objective and expected outcome by county manager.
Thank you, Ms. Fains. Good afternoon, Board. So as Ms. Fain stated, the today's object objective is just to provide a high level overview of the proposed 2526 budget. And so what we'll start with is just a conversation about budget adoption timeline. So right now, we do have the timeline for the budget to be adopted on June 2nd. I don't know if we'll make that deadline based off the conversations today, but we do have until June 30 to adopt the budget. So as long as we're adopted by June 30, we'll be fine. And so first, I want to. Stephanie is going to just do a summary of the revenue projections to get us started.
Good evening, everyone. Afternoon. So summary of the revenues. Property taxes and sale taxes are the major drivers of budget revenue increases. So they are projected to bring in an additional $1,089,138 in revenue. Other revenues projected to increase include investment revenues, ABC revenues, registered deeds, inspection revenue from the city, and miscellaneous revenue. An addition of $160,000 in revenue from the city of Henderson for our code enforcement services. Sales taxes will remain flat based off of projections. Investment earners increase of $300,000 due to actuals. Alcohol beverage control revenue increase of $72,000. The county receives 85% of the net revenue from ABC profits. So the registered deeds revenue will remain flat with this budget. Building inspection revenue decreased due to proposed agreement with the city of Henderson pending board consideration on June 2nd. Ambulance revenue anticipated of 1.9 million is a small increase from last year, 1.891. DSS revenues remain flat based off of recommendations from the DSS fiscal staff. Sheriff revenues are decreasing $40,000 due to actuals and changes in charges for permits. So the appropriation from the fund balance for this 2.2 million, 377,158, compared to zero in fiscal year 2425 budget. There was no appropriation from fund balance due to the tax increase from last year. So as of June 30th, 2024, the general fund unassigned, general fund balance unassigned was $26,851,746. There have been budget amendments since July 1, 2024, in the amount of $1,832,598. So as of right now, the current balance, fund balance, is 20 million, $25,019,148. So $60,800, $60,810,845 was approved for the fiscal year 2425 budget. As of right now, the current amended budget is at $63,605,58. So the general, the general fund unassigned fund balance is 40% of the expenditures.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Next, we have the summary of expenditures with notable funding increases and capital. The salary study implementation includes an increase of salaries and fringes of $1.2 million. County health, county employee health insurance increase is also a $1.2 million increase. Current expense increase for Vance County Schools to assist or supplement is $680,000. Emergency services overtime budget properly budgeted for overtime based off of previous years expenditures is $375,000. The jail budget, which includes jail health, special contracted services, food, and provisions have never been budgeted properly. So there is a large increase in jail budget for $803,000. Increase to Vance Granville Community College current expenses and capital outlay is 196636. Mandated employer retirement contribution has increased for law enforcement is 16.1% versus 5.1%. And for non-Leo, which is currently 13.65% and will increase to 14.35%. Incentive payments for economic development previously never budgeted will be $106,500. The finance department, per recommendation from auditors and LGC, is noted that finance staff needs extensive training. This is the entire staff that has never received any training before, and that's a $12,000 increase. Additionally, on the next page, you will find the capital request, which totals 1.6, 1.9 million dollars, $1,966,480, $498.
And so the next thing in your packet is just a few notable unfunded requests that I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of. So Vance County Schools actually requested $14.2 million, and the recommendation is $9.8 million. IT requested a new position that was denied. The Fire Marshal's Office requested a deputy fire marshal position, which was denied. The Fire Department requested $84,000 for replacement of exterior and interior doors and windows, replacement of, and also replacement of outdated equipment that was denied as well. The Sheriff's Office required, requested the public information officer position, as well as an evidence room, which was a little over, was almost $300,000 with between the new, was actually over $300,000 with the new position and the evidence room. The Tax Department requested a software upgrade of $400,000. The registered deeds requested a re-imaging project, which would have been an initial cost of $70,000. Vance County Office Building requested HVAC replacement, which was $75,000. Eaton Johnson is in need of a roof replacement, which was $600,000, which was not approved. Community Partners of Hope requested an increase of $5,000, but we kept their appropriation flat. And the Fire Association requested increases in their annual appropriations, which has been denied as of right now. We did increase them by $10,000 per agency. So the next thing on your agenda is just, I think we should have a conversation. There's been talked about the tax rate, of course. So I recommend that no tax increase nor decrease on the property tax rate. So I just want to make sure that we're all. Is everyone feeling the same about that? Do you all want to have a conversation about the tax rate?
I'm kind of perplexed with that because I thought at our planning retreat, we asked you to bring us a budget that turned back some of that tax increase that we did last year.
That was never discussed. There was, there was never direction to bring back a budget that had a tax decrease. And maybe, and I can go back and look at the video. And of course, and if that was the case, I would definitely apologize for that. But there was never direction to bring a tax decrease. I don't recall that. I don't.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we talked, you might have mentioned it, but I don't think at the, I'm, I'm just, we throw it out there if I'm not mistaken, but I never thought, you know, from what I can remember, that we just, because we know that the things that we had in budget, that what we had planned, that, and we talked about, we looked at different percentage, if it was 8%, and I think that was one of our meetings. But I don't think we ever just decided to take away.
And I don't know that it would have been feasible to reduce the tax rate with a possible debt service on a detention facility. So I just don't know how we would have been able to reduce the tax rate because we only had nine pennies to reduce. And the debt service on the jail, if we do traditional financing, is $4 million a year. And that 10 cent was, I think, $4.3 million, which would have been for a debt service on a jail if we do traditional financing.
I guess I would call something incorrect. I would call considerable conversation about it.
She said she can go back and watch.
I can go back and look at the video just to see. But I don't recall that.
My conversation with you, because I kept, I was for reducing. And every time I talked to you, it was like telling a child, no, 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 no.
You kept asking me for a penny. I said, Leo, I don't know where I can get a penny from to give back to you. And you can just look at this budget, and you can look at the amendments to date that shows you that our budget has been amended to $63 million as, since July 1st of 2024.
I talked about three cents, you know, just in general, three cents. You talked about one cent, then you talked about the health thing, three cents, and it kept eating away at my 10. It kept eating away at my 10 cents.
The health insurance was three pennies. That's right.
I just heard the budget amendments, the $3 million in budget amendments. Can we get a copy of those?
Yes, Stephanie has them actually. Yeah, we have them.
Do you have additional copies?
Yeah, you all can, absolutely, yeah. And all those were brought to the board for approval, of course, as well.
Renee, for the, for the school system, I just want to draw my knowledge that we got a $20,000 support teacher supplement so that we are going to, in the budget to take it up to.
And so the recommendation, based off the chart that was submitted to me from the school system, we allocated enough for them to increase the supplement from 2,500 to 3,000, and then 1% for classified staff. That was in my recommended budget. Yes, ma'am.
Just, I've requested some additional information on that. I believe we just got the budget from the school yesterday. But I requested some additional information. I believe you said that would be ready on Thursday.
Thursday. And so the request was for teacher salaries. And the local, their budget has been on their website since April. So, but that was sent to Commissioner Brumman on yesterday, their request, which was for 14.2 million, which doubled the teacher supplement. And I think it provided a 10% for classified. Of course, I didn't recommend that, but I did recommend the increase.
Renee, all the conversation, the letters that we're getting to supporting the increase in teacher supplement, is my understanding that what the school, we give them a certain amount of money, right? But that's not enough to handle supplement, right?
It would not be enough to honor the request, the 14.2 million dollars. No, sir.
Because they have been raised since, they've been $2,500 ever since 19.
The 80s.
Something, I believe. I can't, because I remember even asking Dr. Bennett, and we needed, and I know we needed to do something to help out our teachers in Vance County because we need to keep qualified teachers. And I know a lot of the counties are trying to make sure they compensate their teachers in the school system because it's much needed.
Yeah, and I met with the school system. They came to see us in person, but then the board chair, Dr. Bennett, and the finance director requested a meeting with Stephanie and I in person, I believe it was April sometime, just to reiterate the request, the need for additional funding to increase because they're losing teachers.
And in that budget, and we requesting this, that money that we're giving them for something, that's a recurring expense for us, right?
Yes, sir. It is. It would be.
And how much is it now?
The additional was, I think, $680,000. It would be a recurring expense, which is like a penny and a half.
A penny and a half?
Yes, sir. Yes, $680,000 additional.
Okay.
So are we okay with moving on from the property tax rate, 71? Okay. So I just want to.
Any more questions?
No, okay. So now I want to talk about the fire tax rate. Are you all wanting to keep the fire tax rate where it is at 7 cent? I will, I did send you all the requests from the Fire Association for an increase to 175 per agency. But of course, the 7 cent tax rate does not support that.
The 1.9 million that's listed in the budget, that's for salaries and stuff for the.
For fire?
For the fire. Yeah.
I have 2, $2,83,021 for fire. And that's for everything except for the rescue. The rescue, of course, is funded out of the general fund. And you talking about the, who are you talking about, Dan? Talking about 971,000? What 1.9 million are you talking about?
Well, you're probably 971, I believe that.
971 does not support any type of hourly rate increase. So the 971 is for all the agencies for part-time assistance, which includes the rescue. The rescue is included in that.
What is the current per hour rate?
I believe it's 17, 17 per hour. I can't remember. I think it's 17 per hour. But they would like to go to a tiered system in which they can offer a higher rate based off of the experience that a firefighter brings into their agency. But of course, the current tax rate does not support them for them to do a tiered system.
I think our intent when we originally did that was to try to keep pay the same for all departments so there can be a competitive situation.
Right, but I do, from the conversations I had last week at the Fire Association meeting, some, some employees of some agencies are being paid the same rate, and they don't necessarily qualify at the same rate as other firefighters. So there was actually conversations about putting something in the contract in which, when you're hired, you would have to have certain certifications to make $18 an hour, or certain certifications to make $19 an hour. So more so like bringing someone in and looking at internal equity to see who has more experience that could possibly make more per hour. So.
So, and we, on the contracted services part, we're currently allowing $18,000?
For. For the financial review. It's, you all approved $2,000 in '23, '24, $2,000 per agency.
How much are those reviews now?
It's more expensive. They, we talked about it last week. What did Brandon?
6,000?
6,000. And so there was conversations about revising the contract so that they could just do a compilation review for two years, and on the third year, do an actual full review, correct? Yes, that's right.
How much is a compilation review? 2,400? Okay, and you have an organization that would do all of those?
Several of them use the same one, but most of them you should. Your CPA is the one that can actually do the in-house compilation for you.
And so. And the issue that we've been having is, I believe some of the CPAs are behind on some of the reviews and the audits because they just don't have time to do it. So some of the agencies are actually out of compliance with their financial reviews, but not to no, to no fault of their own, unfortunately.
So. 400, adding, changing that to 400 to 2,400 and allowing the compilations would cost us an additional $3,600. And so is that something that we can consider as the board?
Say it again.
Changing the audit requirements to compilation, like every two years, an audit and the third year. And then that would change, and those, those being an average of $2,400, currently they're getting $2,000. That would add $400 times nine.
36 cents.
Would give us an additional $3,600. And I believe that amount is left in the expenditures that it would not affect the fund balance. Is that correct?
And then on the third year, do the actual review.
And then in the third year, we would need to make some consideration for that to adjust for those, for that review. Unless we wanted to create some kind of staggered thing so that we took a little bit, so each department may have one. You know, somebody does a full audit this year, some next year, three of them do an audit, and the next year, three do an audit.
Yeah, we could do a model like that, and so it won't hit all at one time if you all want to do that. Yeah.
Where are y'all at in funding? Where is this on the item? I'm trying to follow you.
It's up under fire tax. Yeah, it's up under other funds, Leo.
Okay. Which, which bullet are you, where that Dan talked about?
Contracted services. Yeah, contracted services, financial. Up under expenses is the second line.
Okay.
What is the $12,000 in telephone postage for?
$12,000 for telephone and postage, right here? Is it for? So we give them funding for that? Oh, okay. So how was that in? Oh, for the, okay. We reimburse them? Oh, okay. Oh, they send invoices to us and we pay for their mailing? Okay. Oh, maybe they're sending a contract. They send us invoices and we re, I guess we pay the bills. Bright speed? I don't know. Can you look up that account? We're going to look up the account real quick. We'll let you know in a minute. Oh, you want, okay. MDT.
MDT and internet and paying for the computer that is distributed out.
Okay. MDTs, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's a difference, it's not tele, I guess you call it telephone or whatever.
It, it's going through.
Okay.
What's the balance on the Carl Lake Substation loan?
You got it? Is it in the summary? Where is it? The balance, I think that's just a debt service payment. Should be in debt books. It's on there?
On the same page as that.
It's in debt books?
I don't have page numbers, so.
What are we dealing with, the front? Is it on the others? Is it on the others?
About $10,400.
$10,300.
That's what we got left?
That's the balance.
So, but we're appropriating $33,900 in the budget?
No, that's the, for, that's the annual that we give. That's the capital. Not capital, but it's, it's for Carl Lake Station. It's for operating. Not for the debt service payment. They've always got $33,900 in previous budgets as well.
For the, for the debt service.
So we need to reduce it then. We can reduce it to 10,000, whatever it is. Okay. We can, we'll just reduce it. That's fine. What is it left? 10,000?
We said it's 10,900?
10,300.
10,300?
So we'll be finished in December when the last payment is made? Okay. I thought it was the operating. That's what we've been saying, yeah. Okay. We got that. Okay. Is that what you were? So that's just the last. So we'll be done with it this year? Okay.
1,300?
1,300. We'll reduce that. Okay. All right. That's easy. We done with it. Okay. So any more conversations about fire, fire tax? Moving forward? Okay. Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to have a brief conversation about capital reserve and of course, review of existing and proposed projects. So of course, we know detention center, right now, the RFQ will close out on June 2nd for repairs to the current facility, but also construction for detention center.
What is that in the book?
It's not in the book. This is just, I need you all's recommendation on what to put to the side for capital, to add to the capital reserve for the detention center. So it's not in the book. So my question is actually, do you all want to add to our current capital reserve to be able to increase a cash payment, down payment on the detention facility? And I say that because our estimate in 2023 was $45 million. I don't think that's going to get us what we need or what, what, what we need in this county, just because of the costs and things have increased so much. So I don't know an estimate right now, but I would estimate at least $55 to $60 million for detention facility. And that's just based off my estimate and everything increasing right now. And I could be wrong, but all of the projects that Mosley has shown us that they built back in 2019, it was $45, $50 million, and this is 2025. So my recommendation is that you all add to the current capital reserve plan or create a separate capital reserve that puts money to the side for a down payment on a detention facility. Granville did something similar in whatever year they built their facility, and they put cash to the side and did a, did a larger down payment. And I am going to recommend USDA loan financing because traditional financing, we can't afford $4 million a year. There's just no way without an additional tax increase. Based off how this budget looks, there's no way we can afford $4 million a year for detention center. So my recommendation is going to be USDA loan financing. And we're actually meeting with USDA next week to have a conversation or week after next, along with our.
We get the RFQ back on June 2nd, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's when it closes at 4:00 PM.
Do we know that we have more than one person bidding at this time?
We only had one the first time, so we won't know until June 2nd.
Second.
This is the second. Yeah, unfortunately, we had to go back out to General Statute since we had to re-advertise.
So what you recommend, to put the money aside, do we wait until we get, until the thing closes and then make a decision?
I would be fine with that.
Say what?
Yes, that's fine if you want to wait because our next board meeting is June 2nd. So it's not contingent on the budget, but I just wanted to have a conversation with you. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Absolutely, yes, sir.
So what we have is we only have, still have one bid.
We can, you all can approve. That's all we need, the second time around. That's all we need. Yeah, that's all we need, moving forward.
I think I saw in the weekly update that the doors have been repaired?
Frankie can speak to that.
In A dorm, B dorm, and C dorm, the doors have been repaired, so they shut. They are locked by key only. They're still not operational from the booth. Only one in, maybe D dorm, well, we had to install a new door, so it doesn't have a lock on it. So I'll have to have a lock and get it welded on.
So.
All the toilets work in A, B, C. Showers work in A, B, and C.
So is that the next step to operate from the booth? Just use the key? What is the next step?
Some major rehabbing the doors.
Yeah, the estimates, we've had somebody come in and look at the door locks and that kind of thing, and we got an estimate on that where they can be actually operated from the booth.
Okay.
Really? Well, 500, over $500,000.
Yeah, so doors are over $500,000, and there's something else that's over 500, camera system.
Camera system was over 500.
Yeah, for both.
I mean, I, I'm just still, I'm, I'm looking at what we got going on there, and I'm still apprehensive about, thinking about spending $50 million of taxpayers' money on a new jail. I just.
I think the issue is just capacity. If we had, if we didn't have capacity issues, the current facility could be brought up to code, but when you think about capacity, the state has told us they're not going to allow us to go over capacity again, and that was clear from the state.
I'm pretty sure all the counties had the same issue, didn't want to spend taxpayer money, but it's something that has to be done. Every county is required to have. We have a jail, and every county has a jail, and we have a responsibility to make sure we. make sure we do what we need to do concerning our citizen protection and having a jail. So I know, and it's needed. We've been talking about a jail for ever in a day, and we already voted to build a jail.
I think, I, I think what we did decide was we were gonna look at the recommendation from whoever our vendor is in the RFQ and let them give us some guidance additionally, I believe, if I recall the motion correct.
No, we, we voted to build a jail.
Go back and look at the motion.
Yeah, we can.
No, what, the RFQ is for construction and repair, so I think that's the direction that I got from this board, so that's how the RFQ was written.
Go back and pull the recording and listen to the conversation, the motion, like I made it. Um, okay.
Okay, so, um, so you all want to wait to make a determination on capital reserve for? Okay, all right. Um, so do you all want to, y'all want to have any discussion on any of the unfunded requests at all? No?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the, um, line item for Eden Johnson on the six hundred thousand dollar roof. What was, um, what condition is that actually in? And if we don't fund it now, is it in such a condition that we gonna have to do it?
I'll let Frankie speak to that. He was overseeing maintenance at the time.
Um, I mean, there is, there is some need to replace the roof, but that is for our gymnasium, vocational building, and the kitchen. So it's not, we've already done roof replacement on the other.
So you're talking about six hundred just for those two things?
It's three. The gym, vocational building, and the kitchen.
Okay, so who's in the vocational building right now?
Nobody right now. Um, it was a conversation that we had, uh, recently that that will be a good place for a maintenance staff to be set up in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, over here at the courthouse, there's no, there's no parking for the maintenance staff, and there's nowhere for us to do any kind, or for the maintenance to do any kind of work there. Where that vocational building is perfect place that we could have everything set up that we can operate right out of that building.
Well, there's a considerable amount of files stored in that building at this time.
There's some file cabinets in there, yes, sir.
It's pretty full.
Well, there's a whole lot of rooms in that building.
It is.
We actually, um, I T is using some of it. And, um, nine one one's got some of it in it.
It's a lot of space.
It's enough area that maintenance could really set up and have a nice work area.
That's the vocational building?
Yes, sir.
So it was there, but no, oh, no high school was there, right?
That's right.
It's a large facility, yeah. I think it's over ten thousand square feet, it.
Probably. It's a, it's a big room, upstairs and downstairs.
It is. It would need some work done to it, but it's a good space, for sure.
So we're saying we're doing what with that now? What, what?
And have them operate. Maintenance is in the courthouse. Yeah.
There's just not enough room. I mean, our new maintenance director, really, his office is big as a matchbox.
Yeah.
What it take to move him there and everything is a major thing to, to start that, to start that process?
We've, we've got a couple, like I said, with the roof, we have a, one leak that we know of, just have to get it checked out, and a few minor things, and they could be over there. Um, so I mean, it, it's, it's doable.
That sounds like a no-brainer to me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So on the, um, part, um, you said in the, on the recreation center court, how bad is that? Just making repairs over there, what would be the estimate and how bad is the condition of that?
I, I think the way that the budget was done when, uh, Mr. Weatherton ac- actually did the budget before, so I think he was figuring like two hundred thousand dollars per area. Um, we have had a roof leak or two at the gymnasium, but we got them repaired. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that it's dire this year.
That's a metal roof, correct?
I don't know, Mr. Weatherton, I can't be honest. I honestly can't tell you. I don't think so.
I guess my concern is, um, this is the area where you're gonna have voters from time to time and also an area where you might have kids. So I wanna make sure that, you know, because you start talking about leaks and stuff, you, you're leaving your, leaving yourself over potential mold. So we wanna make sure, not just we're looking at the roof, but the overall effect of not doing it. So I get, that's why I was asking the question. How bad is it at this point? Is it something that can be deferred to next year?
I think we can defer it to next year. And what I think we probably should do is probably break it up into one section at a time and do one each, each year, and I think we'll be fine.
There was a, a line item in there in budget that had for repairs, it was like five hundred and fifty thousand or something, if I remember correctly.
Could be like two fifty-five. You talking about in maintenance of five nineteen? Yeah, but that five nineteen, yes, it's labeled Eden Johnson, but that is any repairs that we do in DSS, um, or anything like that. It's all locked in that one building.
Okay. Now, when we do those repairs, is any of that billable back to social services so that we get bunnies?
That, that is something that we have talked about. I think Ms. Williams has talked to Ms. Weaver and them about that, that we're gonna keep up with that a little better and see if we can get some of that back.
Yeah, that's what I, because I was, I was looking at that and, and I just saw that that was revenues, and I know you, you're trying to move all the, the maintenance to central services. But when you do that, then it makes it more complicated to,
Yeah.
to isolate.
That's why she kept it in her budget. Yeah, we didn't move DSS because we wanted reimbursement. Yeah, Stephanie recommended keeping it where it is.
And one thing, too, on the Eden Johnson on that gymnasium, since that is our emergency shelter, we're gonna look at getting them floor drains and the showers back up. But I'm gonna try to work with Ms. Lassiter and see if we can't get some grant money since that is a emergency shelter. Um, I did find out that we probably could've done that with the heating and air, but.
Too late.
All right, so these proposed changes we've got to do for the school that's leasing over there now, is that in the budget?
So that was gonna be a, um, just a one-time, um, because that won't happen until after July first, so I did not budget for it. The plan was just to do a budget amendment when, when we actually know the final total. I think it's one seventy?
One fifty.
It's one fifty. No, I did not add that. I was just gonna do a budget amendment when the time comes.
That's for the doors, we were starting?
Uh-huh, yes, ma'am.
We can't even, we can't even start till June. That's when most of the kids are out.
Yeah.
Um, if I can get the door fronts in to go ahead and cut and open them.
Yeah.
But that's what we're shooting for.
We gotten an estimate on strengthening the?
I'm still waiting on, um, Oakley to get back with me. Um, we had a conversation, um, just last week, and he had a conversation with the fire marshal. So we're, we're working on that.
Okay, um, and then, um, the rest of these, um, is there necessity for the reimagining to keep up with modern standards?
But it, so the conversation that I had with Cassandra, um, so Cassandra doesn't have a bathroom in her office right now. So in order to get the bathroom, which is added in her capital, she wants. Yeah, I know. I was just gonna say, she decided to forego this project so she can get the bathroom. So it's nothing that's needed, that's immediate. She asked me to defer it until next year because they don't have a bathroom and they have to use that public bathroom. So she asked it, can the bathroom be redone? I guess there was a bathroom at one time that they want to, um, I guess, repair or bring it up to code to be able to use the bathroom so they don't have to use that hallway bathroom all the time. She's the only office that does not, that does not have their own bathroom in this, in this building.
Can we not use those special registers, deep funds to do the imaging stuff?
Uh, I didn't ask her that, but I don't think she has that much automation funds that will cover it. Because at, every year, it's seventy thousand dollars for like four years, I do believe. So it's like, yeah, that's right. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough to cover it. She would need county dollars.
Okay, and then the tax, um, the office wanted four hundred thousand for the software upgrade?
We deferred it to next year.
So, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So could you just go down the list to see, you know, why the, what was the decision made not to fund these different projects?
Yeah, so with, of course, with Vance County Schools, um, we couldn't afford an additional five million dollars without raising taxes to support that. Um, I T, um, requested a new position, and I asked my department heads not to request any new positions because I already knew the bu- budget challenges that we would have with health insurance and the proposed salary study. So that's for I T and for the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, Fire requested eighty-four thousand dollars for replacement of exterior and interior doors and windows and replacement of outdated equipment. And I asked, um, I think we had a conversation about, we don't know what's gonna happen with that building, so I just decided to not move forward with that. Um, Sheriff's Office, of course, was not recommending any new positions. The evidence room, there is a need for that, but I was just trying to figure out if, you know, once we build the new facility, can we make something work in the old area? Um, so I did not want to move forward with that. Um, I already talked about tax, registered deeds, Vance County Office Building, H-back replacement. I don't think that that was an immediate need. Is that right, Frankie? Okay. Um, Eden Johnson, we just talked about that. Community Partners of Hope, I just kept them flat because I didn't want to continue to increase the budget because it was already high. And the.
What'd they get? What's their rate?
They get five and they wanted ten. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
They want an increase of five thousand?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, mm-hmm. And then the Fire Association request, I did not want to recommend a tax increase on, um, any level this year, so that's why I did not recommend a tax increase to support the, um, Fire Association request.
Did you talk with the Fire Association? Let me know. We didn't, we're not trying to, if, if any kind of increase, are they aware of your position?
Uh, they are, but they still wanted me to express their needs, um, to you all.
DSS had requested an I T compliance position. Did we fund that?
I didn't even know about, no, they didn't. No one requested any new positions this year because I asked them not to. I can ask Randall. Is Randall here? Oh, yeah, he is. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember any request for a new position from Social Services. Because I asked all department heads not to request any new positions, but I mean, Sandy, did you request a new position? Okay, all right. Well, I didn't, I guess I didn't. I wasn't aware of the request. Uh, I T, what was the name of the position?
I believe it said I T and.
I T Compliance Administrator for DSS. Now Sandy requested that to partially take over some of the duties Carol has, being the liaison with I T and with DSS, and to take over some of the duties from Charles for minor things like password resets. N C I D issues, things of that nature. Right now, Carol's being inundated with issues, and she's having trouble balancing that with her actual position. That's what the nature of the request was.
Yeah, I, I believe we have a compliance review in two thousand twenty-six, and that position is required as part of the compliance review.
Okay, I just need that. Sandy, can you get that documentation? It's, it's required per the state? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Can you send that documentation to me? Okay, please do. Yeah, just make sure you email it to me. Yeah.
What kind of questions are we looking at over there?
Hold on for a second. Randall, did you, so do you know if that's required by the state? Have you, had you been aware of anything that the state is required? Okay, all right. Yeah, I just need to do some research because that'll be, um, that'll, of course, to increase the budget, but we can get reimbursement back, um, either way. But yeah, we can, um, we'll look into that. Yeah.
Was that the same I T that you have on?
Uh, it's a different, Randall needed another position. That would've been for his department.
My position, uh, requested it because we need it, but I also understand that this is not the appropriate time for it, so I'm okay with us not getting it this year. It will likely be a request I make again next year.
So Randall, let me ask you a question. This position for, um, that DSS has recommended, is there nothing that Charles, Charles can't take on those additional duties? Or I guess you need to know what the duties are.
Not, and do what he's doing now.
Okay, all right, okay.
That's, there's too much to do the day-to-day operations and do the management of all of the N C I D emails, et cetera, and administrative duties. That's too much for a single person.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
It does have to.
Be a full-time position.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Kelly, you have a question? Oh, no, okay. Make sure to answer this.
I did, but I'm just floating on that.
Okay. All right, so I think that's it for the unfunded request. Um.
I have a question on the funded request.
The unfunded request?
Funded request.
Okay, yes.
On the corporate extension van, is that not something we could put in with our leased vehicle?
I'll let you speak to that. You wanna do it? Yeah, it's an insurance issue.
Um, just like we have spoken about the law change, if we lease a vehicle, we can't do fifteen-passenger for minors. We can do eight to ten-passenger van leased, but not a fifteen-passenger.
Yeah.
If we own it, we can, they can ride in it.
I think it's from an, an insurance provision that says we can't, we can't, uh, have that leased vehicle versus own vehicle.
So you said if it's leased?
If it's leased, we can't, yeah, then the insurance won't cover it.
Okay.
Insurance won't cover it, or they won't, they won't cover a passenger van?
It's the, it's because of the passengers.
Cover the fifteen-passenger van with minors.
Mm-hmm. It's because of.
But if we own it, they will.
So there was a thing, a provision that was a few years ago, that if you had the old straight van, you could do it, but if you had the box van, then it was okay. Does that not still apply?
Just, they, they base it on numbers.
Okay.
Eight to ten, we can, if we lease it. Fifteen can't, if we lease it. Yes.
Yeah. We try. Okay, and so the next is just commissioner discussion and guidance on?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
I had a conversation with the Bramble County Commissioner, and when they were talking about some capital monies that we haven't been spending.
Is it for the community college?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, we had a meeting with Dr. Damaris and Drew maybe a month and a half ago, and Granville has been putting money to the side every year for the community college, and um, Vance County has not. They've been putting aside four hundred thousand dollars every year to be able to support the community college, but of course, Vance County has not contributed, I don't think, much. We haven't contributed anything, so my recommendation, um, in my budget message was to also set up a capital reserve because our portion is five point six million dollars for the capital that they need over the next five or six years. That is correct. And so I'm recommending a capital reserve for that as well.
So where's that in the budget?
It's, I'm, I'm, I need your direction on how much you all would like to do moving forward, and we can add it.
Well, our agreement with the Bramble County is that we'll, fifty, right?
Seventy-five, twenty-five. Seventy-five, twenty-five. So if they're doing four hundred, our portion, yes, I would agree that we need to do that moving forward. I told Dr. Damaris that I wanted to have that conversation with you all.
You said they put four hundred thousand?
They've been doing it for several years, waiting for Vance County to catch up. Yeah.
Doing, how much are they doing a year?
Four hundred thousand a year, and so that would be there, yeah.
And I believe we, we delayed that because we were anticipating some state grant funds.
Okay.
We're not getting any of those state grant funds.
We haven't gotten any. What year was that? What year are you referencing? Because it hasn't been since I've been here.
That was two, three years ago.
Okay.
And did they?
Did the community?
Funds, which is.
Granville County?
To the, to the amount they're putting in.
No, that's, that's just the money that they put.
They're coming out of their own.
They are.
So how much has Granville County been putting? So how many years they been doing it?
Um, I think Drew said three years, for the past three years, they've been, and just waiting on Vance County to, to put in some, yeah.
What can we afford to put aside?
Well, we have a healthy fund balance, so it depends on, because my recommendation would be if, if, if they have four hundred, if they're doing four hundred every year, then I would say seventy-five. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give a number. I need direction from y'all.
That putting aside, like, what is it? What's, what's the funding from? They do twenty-five percent?
We, we're seventy-five, twenty-five, but that doesn't mean that, yeah, I know.
In one point two million.
I know, that would be one point two. I know.
And.
I, I mean, we could, we could do, we could do four hundred thousand. I mean, I mean, the four hundred thousand doesn't necessarily mean that that has to be the twenty-five and we have to be seventy-five.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, we could start with five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Because it's still in reserve, they hadn't spent it, right?
Correct. Yeah, they just have it on the side waiting for us.
What did she say?
She asked. It's in reserves. Yeah. I would say five hundred thousand.
Well, I, I mean, to me, we need to look at what the needs actually are.
They have a lot, it's, it's.
I understand they do.
It's a lot.
The availability of resources. Now, there was a, a bill that was floating at one time to, to funds through a bond, uh, state bonds, some of the, um, community college things. I don't know if that's still floating. And that would, would alleviate a lot of the pressure from both of us if, uh, we were able to get those, those funds. But again, we need to check on that and see if that bond is still floating or the idea of that's floating in the legislature.
Okay.
Now, the money they're putting aside, is it for capital improvement or for general operation?
Uh, it's for capital improvement, yeah. So this year, I was able to, um, fund a vehicle because I think they had a vehicle that was an early nineteen nineties vehicle or late eighties, I don't know how old it is. Um, but I was able to fund, um, recommend funding a new vehicle and H-back replacement for the Civic Center, I do believe. Yeah. I know, all the needs at one time. I mean, I don't think these things are wants. I believe these things, these things are definitely needs, for sure.
Well, I went to a workshop, this has nothing to do with capital improvement the other day, and they were talking about, um, the Megatronic program and everything, and they prepared drones and stuff.
and they pair drones and stuff, they're doing their classified button, and just one, one drone costs twenty-two thousand dollars in terms of trying to train. And the kids, the kids and the adults that are in the program, before they can graduate, they'll be employed. So-
Yeah.
You know, education-wise, they're doing an excellent job, but capital improvement in order to expand and do the kinds of things with what's coming in the future, they're gonna have to expand.
Yeah. I just think things have been deferred for so long and now you're getting to the point where you can no longer defer.
Cause the classroom, the Megatronic that I went in and everything, I remember it being a welding shop. They converted it into, when I was employed, they converted it into a classroom and it's just jam-packed, it's not, I'd say conducive for what they need to do in expanding, so. That's a capital need right there.
Yeah.
And that, never mind, you know. And that South Camp was buzzing with students the other day. They're bursting at the seam.
Yeah.
And if I recall correctly, on the, the school systems, there was a time that we funded some doors to lock and all of those things back probably three or four, five years back. Um, did that not happen or what, what?
I'm not sure. This is a, it's a new request from my understanding. Um, we can do some research. How many, how long, how long ago? I mean, I'll have to, I can talk to John.
We, we did something where we funded some doors where there was a, when they started having some of the school shootings and stuff where you, the doors were locked um from the office.
This is where?
At the high schools and middle, well, at schools, I remember, we had some conversation about it. And whether we actually did that or not, uh, I thought that was funded and I thought there were some grant funds that were made available for that.
We were discussing, but I don't remember whether it was funded.
Yeah.
On the mandates.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not just, I, I, that was something we had-
There was some discussion and everything, but at the high school, we're down.
Let me just-
I can ask, I can ask John, just to see if they've ever requested it and if it was approved and if they have been done in any schools, cause I believe some schools have been done. But I think this captures the rest of the schools, if I remember our conversations correctly. So I think this, this'll be for the remaining schools that don't have that protection right now.
Get some clarification on that.
Yeah, I'll get with John.
More specific information?
Yeah.
So let me get a clear understanding. Um Renee, so the public school, the additional security, that's what you said, we act, they asking for those now? And that, this is for equipment or the eight fifty for everything that we giving?
Hmm, so what was it to request?
I see equipment.
Yeah, it stands for the uh security equipment, cameras, door access, panic locks, and building security vestibles at the main entrance.
Mm-hmm.
But is, is that the eight fifty for everything, building and stuff there or just?
No, is it supplement?
No, 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 not supplement. No, 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 not current expense. No, that's just for capital, yes ma'am.
This capital, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now this, this gate for staff parking, what is that?
Yeah, so um I am requesting um a gate for, we don't have any parking for county staff. I mean, they're parking all on our landscape when they get to work. They have nowhere to park. So I'm just recommending a gate for this parking lot that's over here that you all normally use, so you have access card to use it, because we can't keep certain agencies for parking over here. Even, either that or a recommendation for signs for county parking, because our, our staff has nowhere to park. And some people think that parking is not an issue, but it's absolutely an issue.
The issue is you have to walk a little bit.
But if there are no parks, you don't, there's nowhere to walk from.
We have a courthouse that's-
I know, but the issue is the courthouse employees should park in their parking lot and our employees should be able to park in our parking lot. That's, that would be my recommendation.
It's a public parking lot.
Agreed.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to put up a gate, just so somebody doesn't have to walk two hundred feet.
I don't think, I don't think walking is the issue, it's just there is no parking downtown. There is no parking down here. It's terrible.
Right? People park in-
Mm-hmm, they double park, they park how they want to, all the time. It's terrible.
The court park in there.
I do, I know, and they should be parking at the courthouse.
So we should-
You can park anywhere. The whole parking lot over there beside the courthouse.
That's cool.
No, it's, I mean, not at eight o'clock in the morning, eight-thirty in the morning.
Okay, so the next question is, um, it's not just our employees that work in this building, you also have adult probation, so you're saying give them access as well?
Anyone that's housing this building would have a um, a access card. Yes, ma'am, even you all would have access card. Oh, God, yes. But anyone that works in the courthouse, that should be parking at the courthouse, where there's available parking for them to park, we would like for them to park there.
Okay, so if you're gonna take away certain parking for the courthouse, would you in turn give up some of those parking spaces that nine-one-one is occupying and not using? Cause some of those are empty, so when people drive past those empty spots, they'll come over here and get a spot.
Which means, but it's not labeled. What do you mean, give up?
Yeah.
They are labeled, yeah. I mean, we could, that, that wouldn't be a problem.
I think we need to, maybe need to look at that, because there are a lot of um spots that are not being utilized on shifts.
Yeah.
And when people have court, they're walking.
Yeah, the telecommunicators. Vivian, yeah, it's for the tel-, Vivian, can you come up for just one second and talk about your parking for your staff? So you have assigned parks for your staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We had to. Um, years ago, we were parking on the street and having to walk up here to go into the nine-one-one building to work. Um, because during court, and still sometimes they still will, people that go to court was still pulling out parking spaces. And then I've, I've had to step out multiple times to tell them, you know, they can't park there. Um, but yeah, we had to do that many years ago.
How many you have?
Roughly ten, I think it is.
Okay, okay, alright, okay. Thank you.
Your way.
Yeah, I think the issue is-
Is that ten adequate for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You have ten people on a shift at a time?
You have ten people?
Ten people working on a shift at one time?
Uh, well, it's uh, was three in the office. Um, at times when Brian was there and he got it before me, the prior director. He had five people in the office. Um, now it's two and then I have four full-time, a floater, and then my part-time position. So, yes, ma'am. Um, I also have an EM truck that's parked in one that stays there where the position wasn't filled, so yes, ma'am.
Cause I'm up there quite a bit and sometime I come and I can't find a spot to park in the courthouse. Cause those are, they were traditional courthouse parks.
Mm-hmm.
And I see nine-one-one spots that's empty.
Mm-hmm.
But yet I gotta go and park a long way and I'm trying to get in court. We get those spots, they're empty, but I can't use them.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's my concern. We reassess that to see whether or not, you're talking about doing a gate and there's some kind of-
Trade-off, yeah, we can do that. Mm-hmm, that's not a problem. We can look into an assessment and see what that looks like.
Can I ask, when you're talking about parking spaces across from the city parking beside the bail bondsman, there is an empty lot there. What, is there any potential that we can negotiate somebody and there could be parking spaces there? It's a open area.
Just trying to figure out.
Does it belong to the church?
Come in the church. Where you're from? Mm-hmm, we're talking about the parking lot, this-
Right across from the city-
Somewhere's the church, that's the church parking.
What I'm saying, you know, it's not used during the day with city employees, I'm just saying, could we negotiate with them in terms of parking?
Is that the church?
Uh-uh. Right down from the bail bondsman.
It's a church now, but it used to be across from the Oba Station. And you know, it's got that big parking lot.
Big open field.
Yeah.
You got the water, then the bail bondsman, then that parking lot right there.
Okay, just the, where the old car lot was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can, we can do some research, Mr. Kelly.
I'd check with them and see if you could use it and everything in terms of uh space, you know, and if you could use it, then city employees, the county employees could park there, be reserved strictly for them. If you could go get with the church.
Okay. I don't-
No, right beside the bail bond, there's an open lot when they have the car show and everything.
I don't know where it is. I need to see it. I'll go-
If you go to the parking lot and turn right on the Chestnut Street, it's a whole big area there.
Okay.
Could be, you know-
The big white building? Yes, there used to be a car lot back in the day, years ago. So like if you're leaving out the courthouse parking lot, then that parking lot that sits directly across the street.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I guess my thoughts are that our business is to serve the public. And when we start telling the public they need to be away and can't get to our facilities, then we're not serving our public the right way.
Well, see Dan, that's why I mentioned, turn, that's parking space, you can negotiate with the church and city employees, you can reserve that, nobody parks that with city employees. And uh, I give an example, my son works for the City of Charlotte.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't get to the parking lot that's designated for parking at by seven forty-five, you have to park any place.
Right.
You know, you're out of, you're out of, whether or not you're city, county employee, you're out of a parking space. So it's up to you to find where you park, but if you could get that space and use it and city employees, county, county employees could park there, it would solve your problem. Back to what Dan said, if the public is coming to take care of business here, you don't want to restrict them in terms of not being able to find a parking space.
Okay. We'll do some research and see um who that lot belongs to and if that's a possibility as well.
So you have an actual estimate that it would be twenty-five thousand or that's just-
That was just our best estimate. I think Brad did that before he left and he estimated twenty-five thousand. Also, it may not even be um that amount.
Just, just a curiosity question. What makes a website ADA compliant?
Yeah, I, I have to have Randall ask that, answer that question, but I do-
Probably heard it.
Oh, yeah, he's probably coming up. I do know um when I was working in Rockingham County and they redid their website, um, people have to be able to, so the PDF can't be a scanned PDF to be able to review the document. It has to, has to be a, a PDF that's searchable, but I'll let, I'll let him answer that, cause I cannot answer that.
The ADA compliance question.
Yes, sir.
The requirements for that are all of the images on the website have to have metadata and tags so that if somebody with low visual acuity or is blind reading it, the computer can understand it and describe the image to them. All PDFs have to have full text metadata and searchable, so somebody can search for it and it can translate to whatever device they're using. Um, all of the links have to have a preview and an indication of where the page is going. Basically, it's everything you need for sip and puff, high visibility, high contrast, and text-based searching. Um, our current site only qualifies at sixty percent of meeting the recommendations. The recommendations were just recommendations. They become requirements as of January the first. Once they are requirements, basically we can be held accountable for it and sued if our site does not meet those requirements. We are a little bit behind because we're tier one, we were given additional time versus other locations. This is something we've known was coming and we knew this was going to be the budget year, we would have to take care of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Randall.
Renee?
Yes.
Can you go back about the schools? I'm confused. We're not gonna budget. What is it, we not budgeting for the schools? Was it something about security to walk, what, what are we not giving to the schools?
No, we recommended um the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a capital to be able to um, to do the um security. I did recommend it. In their capital outlay.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, we not gonna not do something about the security part for the schools? Okay, just wanted to make clear.
Yeah, we recommended it.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any more questions about anything? Um, the City of Henderson did a water rate study. So um our water um is going to, the purchase of water is going to increase thirty-two percent effective July first. And then for fiscal year twenty-seven, it's gonna be an additional five point four percent increase. So the rates that we have now um have not increased since July first of twenty nineteen. So the, the last agreement was in twenty eighteen, but the increase, we have not had an increase since June, July first, twenty nineteen. But it is going up thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent.
And this from the city?
Yes.
I should have an actual, what our cost is gonna be the first of the week.
Yeah, we're still waiting.
Okay.
Thirty-two percent.
Alright.
And then another year, five point four.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and Terrell had mentioned this to me, that this was happening, but we just got the rates.
I thought we were told thirteen percent and then another thirteen percent.
Well, we'll wait for Frankie to get confirmation, but the rate study shows that we are thirty-two percent.
So we in a situation like Franklin, Franklin County, uh-
Seems to be. The other thing in the solid waste fund, it's like there's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar deficit this year in the budget.
Yes.
Um-
That's why I recommended a household fee increase. Again, we increased it last year, but-
Yeah, I didn't see that. So I noticed some, some of the, the fees and itemization of it that, that uh, when I was going through the line item, um, let's see.
I guess my question is, is that thirty-two percent negotiable or that's-
We haven't got, we haven't gotten that far yet. Yeah, I plan to have that conversation.
Did our contract not have a maximum that it could go up in a year, I think?
Um, the contract just pretty much stated whatever increase that is imposed on others, it would be imposed on us as well, if I remember. Cause me and Jonathan looked at it, so, so I'll look at it again.
We're, I think, consistent with the out-of-county, the out-of-city rate.
Yeah.
And what we did check on too, Mr. Brummond, is how many gallons per day we were using.
Mm-hmm.
So it didn't take us in another increase and we're gonna be fine.
Yeah, so we're less than five hundred thousand, so we should be okay.
Alright, so we're a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars short based on the budget proposal.
Yes, sir. And that's even with the increase, just because of the CPI increase with um GFL, unfortunately. That's increased um over the past few years. And I think the increase of five dollars last year didn't even touch it. And so it's been recommended um over the years that we increase that household fee, but we have not. But that fund needs to be self-sustaining, so we do need to get to the point where it's able to um support the expenditures.
My question, now, in the solid waste fund um budget, it didn't give us the estimated spending for this year?
No, wait a minute, hold on for a second. It should.
But it's-
Let me see, hold on.
I mean, I'm looking at the page.
Let me get to it, hold on for one second.
Fire tax thing.
Solid waste, here it is.
In the line item.
Mm-hmm.
What, five, Dan, you want page five?
Talking about the-
No, I'm on, wherever that fire tax page was, if you'll flip back another page.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, recommend it. The expenditures. Expenses? Yeah, you, we have it, Dan. You talking about the expenses?
Mine says twenty-four, twenty-five approved, twenty-five, twenty-six requested, and twenty-five, twenty-six recommended. It doesn't say what the others said where it's um estimated, twenty-four, twenty-five estimated. It doesn't have that on there.
Oh, the estimated is missing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I noticed that, that some of those-
Yeah, we went with the same format, cause I think last year was format in a, for those, in other terms estimation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you want the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated, was that you're looking for?
When you look like, like in twenty-four, twenty-five,
Mm-hmm.
our scrap tire thing was um a hundred and seventy thousand, that was the budget that was approved.
Mm-hmm.
This year-
Okay.
They re, they requested three hundred and thirty thousand. But the budget recommended is, is an additional hundred and thirty thousand. That's almost doubling the amount of the, um, the fees. So I just, that just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we'll um, and I'll get with Jason, just to make sure we had the correct numbers from his budget meeting as well. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll review that again.
Additionally, on the transfer station fees, they're going up thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was because of the um CPI index.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand we've got a CPI.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but then on the contracted services, it went from forty thousand in the previous budget year to two hundred and thirteen thousand in this year.
So special contracted services and contracted services were combined?
Yeah, we added them together instead of having two line items. So it's one line item now.
Okay, so that was a hundred and eighty-five, so we went from a hundred and eighty-five to two thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
It was one seventy-five and thirty, uh-
Mm-hmm, that's right.
One forty-five plus forty thousand, one hundred, or one seventy-five plus thirty-eight.
Right, one seventy-five plus thirty-eight. Those two were combined to be two thirteen in one line item moving forward. Because we had too many line items, we were trying to combine them.
So it went from one eighty-five to two thirteen? I just.
Contracted services would be GFL and anything that they pay, and it would have been an increase.
Now, when we did the, well, we said we would take cards. Do we charge the customer for those cards? Do we have an offset revenue for these card fees?
For the credit card fees. It ain't much, but I do believe so. I just don't know, is it in there? Credit card fees? Oh, bank service charges, yeah, five hundred dollars. We have it.
That's an expense.
So we, I mean.
We have an offsetting revenue.
Five hundred dollars. We don't, but we can add it.
And I noticed that on several of the accounts, we had like, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars in the permit section, planning permits and all. That we had, and I just was wondering if we would look at that and, and pay attention to, to that as we move forward. We, we've got, and, and, but I think at the same time, we've got some employees that, based on what I was looking at with the salary study. I know I had one that was, been here six years and, that I was looking at, that would be making, I think, forty-seven dollars over the minimum for the salary range. And that's, that shouldn't be.
The new salary range?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that should not be, that's, that's compression.
Okay, well, so the study was never a study about compression, so let's just go ahead and make that clear. It was just a market study. So if you all want to do a different study that, that addresses compression, and that's a whole nother conversation.
We have the RFQ that we sent out when we did that.
That wasn't required because it was less than the threshold, so we didn't have to do an RFQ.
We didn't do an RFQ.
No, we did not. We didn't have to. It wasn't required to do so. It's only thirty-six thousand dollars. The general statutes don't require an RFQ for that.
So you're going to try to get them to come to us?
I can see if you will.
If not, we're going to have, because we got to, we got to prove the budget by.
June thirty. So I guess my.
We're going to have to.
I can get with Matt Reese and. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I don't know that, so I guess the questions that you're having though, if it's about individual people. I don't know that that should be in an open meeting in which you're addressing. That's, and that's my concern because you all haven't approved that in the new salaries yet.
Yeah, unfortunately, all, all salaries for government or public information.
Yeah, but it's public after actually, is, is actually, the general statute says current employee salary, which is what it is right now, not proposed. Yeah, right. It's just proposed right now.
Conversation to be able to look at that and then look at some of this compression.
So you want an even bigger price tag on the salary study?
No, I mean, I think we've got to look at places where we can, where it's essential that we need to do. What we've done in the past is, and we did it with the, the fire department and EMS at some previous points. Where we had some issues and, and we dealt with those, and as we could afford it, then we deal with others. And so.
And my concern with that is addressing one department, how does that make other departments feel? Especially with our salaries with, I mean, if you think about public safety and where we are now and the issues we have, detention center and social services. Picking and choosing a certain group, and that's just my HR background, picking and choosing a certain group does not make other employees feel valued. And that's just my concern with breaking it up. I understand we may not be able to afford the entire study. But if we need to look at scaling back the, the increases, but I think the study should be implemented across the board if you all choose to do so. Maybe at a lesser rate, but I don't think that we should pick and choose departments. Because you got to consider how one department would feel if one department gets an increase. And so you're just kind of left out like, well, the commissioners or county administration doesn't care about the position that I have in this county. So that, I have concerns with that. But of course, it's the board's direction. I'll do whatever you all want me to do.
So you asked for them to come in just to give us how they got to the consensus?
And it's going to be the same presentation that I've already emailed to you all, but yeah, I can get them to come in. Absolutely, I can get with them. So, but we need to do that by June thirty, and then what if they're not available by June thirty? Do we hold off on the implementation of the study? I mean, I just want to know. I just need direction from you all.
I guess, I guess we need, hopefully we can get them here. And I guess then after that, hopefully we can get them here. Let's try then after that.
We have to do a special call meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So what's the?
I forgot. I didn't get direction from you all about putting, putting aside a certain amount for community college. Were you all okay with five hundred thousand dollars? Because I didn't get consensuses on that.
I think I wanted to see what the capital needs actually were.
Okay, so you want me to get the request from Dr. Damaris?
Please.
Okay. And we are, I believe we already have it. I have it. Yeah, I can email that to you all. We already have it. Okay.
If you'd please reach out with that concern.
Go ahead. No, no, say what you want to say.
With the other concern that we talked about yesterday, she, that Dr. Damaris addressed me with, so maybe you have.
Yes, because you said they have a building that's flooding right now? Yes, I'll talk to her. Okay.
Okay. You're showing a hundred and sixty thousand dollars revenue from the city for code enforcement.
That's contingent upon a inter-local agreement that'll be effective July first. I plan to bring that to you all on June second. I recommend that thirty percent of the code enforcement budget be reimbursed to us. But the city has recommended that they get the revenue moving forward because of the, you know, the end of their code enforcement agreement. So thirty percent of the code enforcement budget, estimated.
Okay, I guess my question is, you're showing a hundred and sixty thousand, but I don't see that on the revenue sheet for inspections.
It is. It's, it's up under city, hold on for a second. It's up, here it is. It's up under revenue from city of Henderson. Code enforcement revenue.
Where's that at?
It's, you're up on your revenue sheet?
Front sheet's revenue, yeah.
So you're on the first page of revenues, so it's.
The pages aren't numbered anymore.
Yeah, I know. It's up under, I'm just trying to figure out how. Oh, it's next to the last page, Dan. So you see right above miscellaneous revenue? If you go to the last page of revenues, right above it, it says code enforcement revenue from city of Henderson, one sixty. And we're going to build a city thirty percent of the code enforcement department's budget.
Okay, so that shouldn't go to the, to the revenue for inspections?
No. No, 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 no. It'll be an inter-local agreement. And so, and the reason why we did thirty percent is because per my code enforcement director, thirty percent of the work that's done is done within the city of Henderson. So that's why we started with negotiation, just thirty percent. Because thirty percent of the work that the office does is within the city limits. So as the budget increases, it'll increase, well, I guess that's why I did a percentage instead of a flat amount.
Is this the code enforcement, code enforcement where they were getting it free?
Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility of needing, of having a discussion between you and the county, city manager and everything?
But to kind of undo it, I already talked to him and he said that the majority of his board wants to move forward with the new agreement and get the revenue. So, yeah, I talked to him last week. Yeah, I was hoping that we could just kind of scratch that, but yeah, the majority of his board wants to move forward.
Are they going to make the money doing that?
I think they wanted to be able to build their own department, but not with the revenue. It won't support it. Yeah, not, I mean, because code enforcement, a code enforcement person that has all their levels, the salary is at least a hundred thousand dollars, and that's in any city or county. So, yeah.
There was a law that the, all of the inspections fees and stuff had to go and support that department. Is that, was that changed?
Bob here? No, I'll have to ask him. I have no idea. I can find out for you. They said wait.
While I was looking at the miscellaneous revenue stuff. You're only showing this year twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars for the stepping up revenues? Did we build all the counties?
For this year, twenty-four, yes, we did, and we've received that revenue.
We have?
Yeah.
That just doesn't show in this estimated sheet then?
Yeah, correct. So we see, we have eight, that's why we budgeted correctly this year. I believe that when Chuck did the budget last year, we did not budget correctly. So thus far, we're budgeting eighty-eight thousand this year. Yeah.
So what is cards listing under?
Cards, it's, it's up under outside agencies. Yes. Cards, cards. It's a folder. What's that number, Stephanie? Six hundred? Six hundred, six hundred. It's in number order, y'all. Let's stack this way. Yes, counties, but then Randy Cantor decided to retract that request in an email to Granville County. He had not expressed the increase to every county, so he just decided to just scratch it and not request it. So he just requested to be funded the same as it was last year.
And that's the same amount. East counties, and then they divided it up between the four counties. And I know last year we had allocated thirty-five for the round town shuttle, but that was eliminated. I think it's that thirty-five went back into the budget since we didn't utilize it. So that's something that we're using that if it stay in the.
Yes, ma'am.
But they didn't ask for any assistance with that, those same funds for any. And the recreation department, are they going to be under that lease system? You know, there was some complaints that I had heard from some of the residents, seniors were using ACOG, that they are using, we had talked about it before, those self-stated.
Those vehicles.
And so that is going to be under the purchase or lease.
I think it's up under lease. What do we do for parks and rec for enterprise? It is. It's the two vans for parks and rec. Two, and they're getting two vans.
The kids are going to use that, didn't you?
They're going, they're going to get eight and ten passenger vans.
So it'll be covered.
Parks and Rec showed a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase for their programming.
And so that budget was flat except for utilities and the city implemented a salary study last year. So Kendrick kept his budget completely flat except for utilities and salary increases.
And I'm still waiting on last year's budget.
Yeah, I sent that to Chantel. She's getting it for you.
So what I did see when I was reading through this year's budget was they're proposing some new programming for adult program. Is that programming revenue neutral? Are they charging enough fees to cover the cost of that?
I'll have to ask Kendrick. They don't normally discuss fees with us because he told me the budget is completely flat except for salaries. And you said adult programs? I'll ask him and I can get back with you.
Dan, you're talking about the fees they're talking about some approach. They are fees, they're charging fees for the program. Yeah, that's, if it's an adult program, I understand if you've got youth programs. It's one thing, but if you've got adult programs, most counties put fees on that so that they cover them, cover themselves. If they got to cover referees or whatever, they, they cover their own funding. So that's what I was wondering if they've got revenue, because I don't, a hundred and sixty thousand for the number of employees they have is, seems pretty.
I'll ask him. But don't forget that's retirement, FICA, it's, yeah, so I, I, I think it's reasonable, but I can find out for you.
And that's, that's why I think the information I asked for will resolve that pretty quickly.
Okay. Yeah, this is just discussion and guidance on how to move forward.
So what step we on now?
Carol, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I spent several days going through this budget and the way I went about it by going through line by line. To me, I need to go through that to, in order to, to get the answers on things.
That's why I said you can go meet with her on one-on-one. Some things you can, I mean, you can meet with her on one-on-one so you can get your information.
But, but this is information that the public ought to be able.
But a public going to have all the information and available to them.
I disagree with that.
Well, it's all right to disagree. You do it. It's all right, but I would prefer if you need to go a line-by-line item, that you can go in her office like somehow. To sit there and get some information and then if we need to talk about it openly, we can bring it back to the.
And I've already talked to Mr. Hester and he was actually okay. And he did ask me to do the, the charts and I was able to get that and get that out to you all and just the budget highlights. But I talked to Mr. Hester last week, so we've already had a conversation. Tommy, Mr. Hester.
I agree with Carolyn. Dan was going to go line by line.
He can sit down with the staff, so you can get all of it.
We can set a time with staff if you want to come in and do that, Commissioner Brumman. You just need to let me know and I can just put it on our calendar.
So I guess my next question would be, a lot of times when we get these, they're condensed. And I, and I know in the past, we have said that you all have the actual budget books. It's gonna, they're probably twice the size of this and that's available in the office.
So we did it different this year. That's why we have narrative notes in the proposed budget. All the notes support the request. So we don't have the, historically, there were like sheets of paper. We didn't offer that this year, so we did everything electronic. So that's why we had the department heads put in narrative notes. And when they did not put in notes for their requests, we added them when we had their budget meetings.
I guess, I guess my question is, is a lot of times when we're getting an itemization, it may say something like supplies. Or it may say something, you know, like equipment, but I mean, you, for your all purposes, you all, you have an itemization. That's what I'm saying in a book. So I guess my question is, that's not what was put online? So is that available if someone wants to be able to come, if some of, from the public wants to be able to come in and look at that? The actual itemization of how you came up with maybe, you know, that category.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yes, ma'am. So the proposed budget.
Trying to hide anything.
Oh, absolutely not.
We want to be transparent, so like when Chair Faze was saying that he could come talk to you, it's not that we're trying to hide anything. It's just that we have a more condensed version that was put online. But if the public wants to come in and see the actual itemization.
Absolutely.
Then we're going to make that available, because we're not trying to hide anything.
Yeah, and we also created the email that you recommended, the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six email address, which has been put on, online as well. So people can send their feedback. I haven't gotten any emails yet, but I just communicated it, so, but yeah, yes, ma'am. And we can get this version with the comments and we can get a copy of it at the front desk. Absolutely.
We often have discussions about putting stuff online for folks to come in and look at documents like that. Do you have a record to see as to how, who actually does that and everything? I'd be curious.
Who does what?
You know, you said, you know, what you were just saying, but trying to be transparent, so they can come in and look at it and go through it and everything. I just wonder, you know, it's like when you do things computer, there's so many hits and everything. Is there a way to find out if people are hidden it to see if they did, to give you some idea if that is what the public wants?
Yes, I can, I can get Randall to check for me. Yeah, yes, sir.
I guess my concern was, when we were doing the border equalization, and people upset about the revivals. It was a lot of questions about how we were spending the money and what we were spending it on, and I just want.
I don't have any problem with understanding, you know, it's good to know that it's out there if they're actually, what you, what you're indicating. Are they actually responding to it? And seeking that information, that's all I'm asking.
And we'll add these charts to our webpage as well, because that's very beneficial.
It's just like when I'm looking at the sheriff budget, he asked for capital outlay of six hundred thousand and there was one zero. And he says he wanted eight new vehicles. Does that mean they went to the lease program?
They did.
Rifles and vests. I don't know what those requests were. Is that something that's required now or what?
I believe that rifles and vests are required in law enforcement. You want to speak on that measure?
Can you come up? Can you come up, please? Thank you.
Hey, appreciate y'all. Yes, the ballistic vests are required. Um, I believe the shelf life is approximately five years before they have to be replaced. We're trying to get on to a schedule where we can replace twenty-five percent of the vests annually. Um, but I will tell you, Renee and I have spoken about it many times. Uh, we're in the process of hopefully finding some funding that may save the county board and the taxpayers some money on some of these needs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was literally just texting with the district attorney about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, but they are required, yes sir.
Okay. What about the rifles?
Now, I'm, I'm not going to say that a rifle is a required piece of equipment. Um, we have gotten rid of about fifty-two, fifty-three shotguns um that we now have a, a pretty good credit with a local gun dealer. And the, uh, the plan is to purchase the two-two-three, five-five-six rifles to replace those shotguns.
Mr. Kelly, I have an update on that parking lot that you mentioned. The parking lot is actually rented out to the church right now. So it's already in use for the church.
But even if rented, it's not being used in the daytime.
Mm-hmm, okay, and we'll still do some research.
Folks that own the property, so I can ask them.
Okay.
I'll get with you, I'll get with you, I know the two girls that they had owned this place, I'll get with the two.
Okay, all right.
I have some citizens that want to get together and go through the budget, I could use this room, Karen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You just let, um, just let us know, make sure it's empty, whatever day you want to use it.
Okay.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So Ms. Faes, do you all want to um, do y'all feel the need for another um budget work session?
I guess it was some information that need to come, did y'all need to come back to? That, do, do we have any um questions that they need to answer to come back?
I have a few things I can follow up with you all.
Okay, so.
And I can actually provide it at the next board meeting, because I'll have it on June second.
Well, I'm fine, but the, the board, do y'all feel?
It's up to you all, it's whatever y'all want to do.
I'm totally opposed to this process of what we're doing today. It's, it's kind of an orchestrated thing that we, we don't get to go through the budget, the public is not aware of things. There are a number of issues with the budget still that, that need to be resolved. And I've got constituents calling me, asking me questions, and by not using the, you know.
Information, yes, it's an open, obviously, the, the public has a right, we're not hiding, we're not hiding anything from the public. All the information is needed. They have every right, we're putting everything in place that we know to put in place so that they can get information at any time that they want. We putting things on, on the line, if they see something on the, in the budget that they don't understand, they got a right to um request. They got a right to come into the um county manager office to sit down. You already state, you got some citizen that you want to bring. It's nothing off limits to our citizens. We're not hiding anything from our, our citizen. And just to sit here four or five hours just to talk, you know, go line by line when we giving the logistics of any question that we don't understand. If they want to get some um, some question, we are more than, we're um happy to oblige our citizen, we are not hiding anything.
This is my twentieth.
As a commissioner, you have every right and like to go and meet with the county, if, if you don't understand something or if you want to get more clarity, you have every right, Commissioner Brummett, to go. And nobody's trying to c- um limit anything, try to hide anything. And that's the part that um I'm, want to citizen to understand, we are not. We got a trusted administrator, our manager and her staff is working hard to make sure that we move this county forward. And I think they're doing a wonderful job in that. And so we're not hiding, but they got every right to question anything they need to know.
This is my twentieth year doing a budget. And this is the first time that we've not gone through each individual department and reviewed the budgets.
Last year we did not go through each department.
We threw and asked questions on the budget last year. I did come to you.
You came, yeah, you did one-on-one last year.
And then, and that's when we discovered numerous issues with the budget on, in that, that conversation. And I, I, like I said, I'm not.
I'm satisfied with what you presented in terms, I think that giving our county manager and staff an opportunity to, to do something different, that we keep doing it the same way for the last twenty years, don't mean we need to keep doing it the same way. So she's approached it from a different standpoint, so let's give an opportunity to see if it works, see if it works. Uh, if there's any commissioners that have serious problems with it, get with the county manager and the staff and air those out. And if there's a significant change, then bring it back to the board and we discuss it and everything. If you find inequities that are, that are just blatant that we need to address, then we, we address it. I don't think as commissioners we have, that we should sit and go line item by line item. I think that's an insult to the staff and the people that pulled the bunch together to go line item by line item. So I'm pleased with in terms of the new staff and approached it from this different standpoint. Not necessarily the way it's been done all these years, but it's a different way of doing it. If it doesn't work, then she and her staff will look at it and say, okay, you make a valid point, we'll look at it a different way come next year. But let's, you know, let's move forward, find out what you need to know, Dan, but I'm satisfied with what they've done and everything. Um, we ain't got, pardon my English, folks, we ain't got for so much money and there's so much we can do. And there's so many things that are hitting us that it's mind-boggling.
And Leo, I appreciate you so much, um, I appreciate your support and Ms. Faes as well and all of you. And I think, you know, you made that comment about doing the things that we've always done that got us in a position that we were in and we found out about last May around this time, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
That's true.
And we worked very hard on this budget and it was the most difficult budget because I told my staff I was almost terrified to present a budget this big to you all. But the expenses are what they are, we looked at historical transactions and there was no other way to present it to you all than in this way right here. So I appreciate you and I appreciate your support so much, thank y'all so much.
I guess I have a suggestion to maybe appease everybody. Um, I understand what um our chair is saying, Ms. Faes, and I understand what Mr. Brummett is saying. And traditionally, you know, we have set aside two days um where we talk about a budget. So I think a lot of the information was disclosed, it was discussed, especially in the areas that's, the major areas that we need to look at as a board.
Mm-hmm.
So I would recommend that we just do a tentative day and after you have your meeting with the public, if you, if you and some of your um constituents or um some members of the public want to come back, then we have that tentative day that we can come back and for further information. But if you, after meeting with Renee and after meeting with the individuals, if you decide at that point that all of the questions that you felt need to be answered in terms of the line by line, that we need to come back as a group. At least, because see, June is summer, so some people may be on vacation or whatever. So if we just set aside a tentative date, we can come back on that day. But then if it's consensus, once uh we're contacted by the clerk or the uh, the, the county manager, we can cancel that date. But at least there's a tentative date set aside where you can come back. Because I think evidently you have some more questions you want to ask. You know, I can understand that, um, because even from the way you conducted, you know, you're very thorough in terms of different items. And I noticed today you weren't able to potentially ask all the questions you want to ask. So if there's another date set aside, then maybe you want to come back and we can revisit those different items that you want to um discuss.
No one cut his questions, no one didn't cut his question what he want to ask, we just simply said, if he want to go line by line, he need to go to, to the um, meet with the, the um county manager and staff, because they have done a wonderful job to bring us a budget. And we're not going to sit here and belittle their um, their, their obligation, what they have put forth to bring us as our administrator of concern in our county. And so no one has stopped him from asking no questions and we're nobody trying to cut anything short. But like I said, we open, he have every right to go to the manager and get the information and he can meet with the citizen, he has every right.
I think a lot of times when you go.
And let the citizen know that it's keep being thrown out there, that we are not um trying to um keep, we very transparent. Anything they need to know is out there, we're not hiding anything, it's on, you got records, you got, you got questions? You are more than welcome to get answers to your questions.
I think when you do, based on what Faes just said and Carolyn said and Dan, that when you take the opportunity to sit down and do it with the county manager and staff, you resolve issues that might, may not necessarily, to the public, I don't mean this way it sounds, that doesn't need to be, can be resolved and solved by discussion rather than in an open meeting that doesn't necessarily need to come out, that would be, because it, it's kind of been the minute things and everything. And Dan being a figure person and everything, I admire him for that in terms of his banking background and figures and everything. But I think in terms of taking the time to sit down with our county manager, look at the things that bring red flags to Dan in terms of issues and everything can be resolved and, and we don't have to deal with it and I don't, we don't have to deal with it in public, you know what I mean? You know? And I'm not trying to circumvent the public, I'm just saying that a lot of times we say we can solve things in-house, so.
I guess um what I'm saying is this, um, a lot of times we can publish the budget. When you're talking about just an average citizen, the average Joe, a lot of times, they don't understand the complexities of this budget. And some people still, even sitting here today, they're going to walk out of here and still not understand in any time to process. So all I'm recommending is just do a tentative date.
Yeah, we can, we can say, that's not an issue, we can say, we can make the date now, we can go ahead and set another date work session.
So we need to get, we also.
Schedule board E and R, yeah, we can't forget about that as well. So um, what's the tentative date?
In terms of looking at this budget, my constituents, my words, when you see this, they can run away from it.
Right.
You handle it.
Right. And so as long as we adopt by June thirty, mm-hmm, I want to do, let's do the budget, let's do the tentative budget work session first. So um, we don't have to have the budget approved until June thirty. So June second is out the, out the window right now, because there's no way that we'll make it through. So I just need some potential dates, do you all like Thursdays, Wednesdays? I mean, I just need to, what about um, you can't do Wednesdays? So what about June third?
Is that on a Tuesday?
It's two weeks from today, is that two?
I don't get out your, the thirteenth.
I doubt I'll be able to have you, you guys were saying I need to have my meeting before we came back and did that, I doubt I can have a meeting prior to that.
I'm just thinking about June thirty is the adoption date and we need time to make changes and get the ordinance together. The week of the ninth?
I'm, I'm not.
What about?
So what's the intent, so you can get traded time and was to make the changes, you said you need to?
Oh, it can be pretty quickly, two to three days. I would say two to three days.
So what about a week, so next, so you can't meet within the two, because you got next week and then you got next week and then, because of June, it's a week out, right?
Yeah, you got Memorial Weekend is.
Yeah, Memorial.
Next week.
Budget meeting?
Okay, that's right.
This weekend is Memorial Weekend.
So what's the first?
Yeah, I would like the budget work session to be at least two, two weeks, just to give us time, at least a week to be able to make the changes and get it.
We got enough, I guess he want to give his um.
So, what is he looking for them, what is he looking for?
For the um, the day where he can try to, trying to meet with his, if he want to bring.
So Dan, did you want to meet with me before your constituents or after your constituents?
I don't know, I, I got an email where I was given situations where I, I, you know, the, the structure and how I was supposed to meet with you.
Oh, well, my staff will be with me.
So can you, um, we have a date?
The week of the sixteenth?
Do you have a date that you can?
No, I'd rather make it public.
Mm-hmm, I don't want to push up too close to June thirty. I mean, June thirty is the date, as long as adopted on the thirty, we okay?
Exactly.
Well, she said she's going to have.
Mm-hmm, we have to, mm-hmm.
So just, I guess you just need to plan your date with your um citizen.
Uh, when is June tenth? The nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Okay.
We meet the week of the ninth?
Nineteenth.
Before they give them two weeks to get this together.
Mm-hmm.
We meet the week of the ninth, then they.
Let's get the work session date for um.
Budget work session.
Now, okay.
No, I'm saying the week of the ninth.
Oh, yeah, about the tenth, huh?
The nineteenth.
The tenth and eleventh is county advocacy days, is anyone attending? Um, Jeremy and I are attending county advocacy days on the tenth.
On the tenth.
Mm, we'll be in um.
I'll do the twelfth.
The twelfth is that Thursday, somebody said they can't do the twelfth.
Twelfth?
Yolanda, you said you can't do Wednesday?
Wednesday.
You can't, okay.
It's on the Thursday day.
Thursday's twelfth.
Y'all want to do twelfth, four o'clock?
Yeah, four o'clock, the twelfth.
June twelfth.
June twelfth?
Yeah, I said four.
Yeah, do you have no time, Dan?
What?
June twelfth.
Yeah, I mean, I've got, go ahead and schedule it, I mean.
Four o'clock. Next budget work session, okay. Or by the thirtieth, the special call meeting, just, we just have to notice it two days before.
June twelfth, we said four o'clock then.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You got June the twelfth at four o'clock, next work session.
Yes. So now y'all want to schedule board E and R?
We have thirty-something, how many, we got thirty?
Thirty-two, I think Kelly said.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-one or thirty-two, that's what she told me today, so.
Yeah, but you know, if I.
And those have to be done by June thirty as well.
You know, if I come, it gotta be four. And if people can't commit. I don't get our school to June the thirteenth. And so um I was, because we got one.
That's what I was thinking, you mean like do all day? Is that what you mean?
If they can do all day, if I can get four to commit, I won't have to be, I don't have, you know, you can omit me.
Yeah, that's true. You mean do a budget work session and board E and R on the same day? Yeah, she, but she can be here for. So you're saying recommend starting at one o'clock on that day, like we did before?
And, and, or if you can commit to a day, I don't have to be there, as long as you got four people that can commit, if you want to start earlier.
Yeah, right.
Because you know, I can't be to four o'clock.
Right, right.
But if there's a day where people can commit and do it earlier, what you think, Yolanda?
Yeah, Vice Chair, you would have to.
You know, you have to.
It's going to be three people.
Got to be four and then.
Got to be four.
Are you going to be available during the day, um, Commissioner? Okay, and Leo, are you going to be available during the day for E and R?
For board E and R, are you available during the day?
I don't have to be, as long as you got four, since we got so many.
Grandpa Uber.
Oh, oh, okay.
Actually, I'm at work.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said we give a date, you, you don't know.
I've got work.
They didn't say.
Mm-hmm.
Did they say? Did we say one o'clock on the twelfth, y'all want to start? Is that what we said or no?
Well, they were trying to, if they chose a day to start early.
Thirty-two?
We got thirty-two people. And that's what I say, if you want to do it a day, is as long as you got four, I don't have to be here, as long as we got four. The commission, the um Vice Chair can carry it on.
Mm-hmm.
If you all want to commit to a day start even earlier than one.
Yeah, you want to do eight-thirty.
Yeah, so you can get through the whole, all the people.
We be here eight-thirty, Leo. Yeah, some people probably want to show up.
But by the time we got here, a lot of it was resolved, so we didn't even have to do as many as scheduled.
Yeah.
And some people not going to show up.
Yeah, but these are thirty-two that have actually already been reviewed in the tax office, they still want to come before the board E and R. Same way before, mm-hmm, and some of them still didn't show up.
Like fourteen, right? Most we've done a day is like fourteen, right?
Yeah, they actually, they actually showed up, yeah, about fourteen to fifteen, not ten.
It's going to take at least two days to.
They were saying if they did a day, they, they was talking about the day.
Mm-hmm.
Let's not mix it.
Don't mix them, okay.
I won't damn hear.
You want two days? So you want two days?
The eighteen.
If you got those thirty-two wanting to come, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen.
Y'all want to schedule the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth for board E and R?
No.
No?
Not the twenty-fourth, I'm not a real.
What about twenty-fifth?
I'm not a real that whole week.
Oh, that whole week? It's a Tuesday, yeah, that's right, you can't do Wednesdays, right?
I'll be able to school, but I think that week.
What about the?
Two some, in Baltimore, two up. I got to look at, I don't know exactly what that, but he's.
What about the?
Recognizing Baltimore for you. Seventeenth would be fun.
Seventeenth of June?
Uh-huh, y'all good seventeen, yeah?
Make sure I ask you.
What time y'all want to start? One o'clock? Go and do them all, y'all want two days? Okay. Start at one o'clock or four o'clock?
Karen, you're not going to be here, right?
Which one, the seventeenth I can.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm asking um, say, I must, um.
Board E and R. So you want to do one o'clock, like we did before? No, they said they were fine, mm-hmm. You put on your calendar. You send me invite. You send me invite. It's a Tuesday. Mm-hmm. That'll be the first one. And we need one more. Uh-huh. But Leo said he's not available at all the week of the 23rd. What, what's wrong with the 16th? Y'all want to do two consecutive days? Sixteenth is on a Monday. Oh, that's, we won't start until end of evening. Sixteen? Y'all can do sixteen? Yeah, okay. Leo, you can do the 16th, Ms. Fain as well, Dan, sixteen, seventeen? Okay.
I've got a building coming, so I've got, well, if that building gets here, I've got to work.
Okay. So sixteenth and the seventeenth, 1:00 PM, board of E and R. Okay. And we got the budget work session on the 12th at 4:00 PM. Okay.
And so we got the work session is 12, right?
Yes, ma'am. And Commissioner Brummett, just let me know what day you want to come in and do line by line, and, um, I'll have the staff ready and prepared, um, for that discussion. Thank you. I got it. I think something else Kelly told me to mention. That's it. Well, that's all I have. Board of E and R. Yep.
I'll wait for that text. What day we want? That's on my days, 16th and the 17th. At one o'clock, right?
Yes.
One o'clock.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the 12th is at four, the budget work, the second, the tentative budget work session. No, we all had noticed that two days before. Yeah. And I'll get with PTRC to see if they can come do a presentation in the month of June. That's gonna have to be before June 12th. Well, maybe June 12th. I'll email them. Yeah, I'll. Okay.
Wait a minute.
Thank you.
I think I got it the number twelve. I think it's.
What about it? Oh, yeah. You got the request, don't you? Yeah.
What's the 12th on, um?
Thursday.
I think I got it on my.
That's what?
The budget work session, the 12th at 4:00 PM. Yeah.
We get the 12th, 12th, 16th, 17th, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And Kelly will call y'all and remind you as well.
Wait, Renee, I'm checking this 12th. Something just came to me, wasn't it?
Okay.
I got a form at four, at the 12th.
You do?
I do, at four.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have a form at four.
It's okay, so we can.
It's on the Thursday, right?
Uh-huh, yes, ma'am. June 12th, um.
What happens on the 13th? We meet on the 13th yet?
No, not yet. Uh, we'll do a special call meeting, and we just have to notice it two days before, so we don't have the special call meeting for budget adoption just yet.
So can we do, like, right up, we gotta, we gotta meet the second, right?
Uh-huh.
Do a work session that week?
Yeah, if you want to. But I think Dan said that might not give him the chance to speak to his constituents.
Oh, his people, that's right.
Yeah.
And meet with Renee.
Oh, man. Okay, I'm sorry.
Y'all don't want to do no Fridays, do you? Want to do Friday? Want to do Friday? No, okay.
Okay, you do the, um, the board of E and R then, switch it?
Oh, yeah, we could switch board of E and R.
And that week?
Yeah. That's true.
Don't let she say like the thing. Dan, if you got something else to do, as long as you got a form.
Yeah.
Board, say it again, it's Yolanda.
We could do the board of E and R on the second, then we're not worrying about him meeting with his.
On the second, we gotta meet.
Week of the second.
June 2nd is our.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
We just go ahead and knock one of the board of E and Rs out.
Okay.
And then move the other two sessions, one work session and one E and R. So that way we get the next.
Make the 16th the work session?
The next work session, and then the, a board of E and R.
So you saying make the 16th the budget work session?
Uh-huh.
Right? And board of E and R is gonna switch to the 12th?
No, not the 12th.
Not the 12th.
Early, that week.
Okay.
I'm gonna be able to come.
Okay. But they were gonna be starting at one o'clock anyway, remember?
Okay, one o'clock.
Is that what you were saying? Or no? That's what I was saying. Switch your board of E and R to 1:00 PM on the 12th, since she can't be here anyway.
Yeah, but we need two board of E and Rs, because you know, people gonna come.
We got that on the 17th.
Seventeenth.
They're gonna continue it though. Remember, some people came back.
The 17th?
But.
That gives us a little, they, they could just go ahead and get a board E and R after wait that first week. And then the next times that we had designated was one, one for the workshop and more, budget workshop and one for the E and R, the second E and R.
Our board of E and R early, then.
You saying have board of E and R early in case it needs to be continued again.
Right.
But I think if we.
Back then, um, people are meeting, instead of looking at doing the budget session early, let's go ahead and do a board E and R early. That way, we've left the door open for the people who need to maybe bring a document back, they can and then just have that work session. I give him time to have his meeting meet with you.
Okay.
And, and everything's knocked out.
Okay. So what day are you proposing? You said for this? Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we do the, the E and R?
Okay, what, the 12th was set aside for what?
Budget work session.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next? And the E and R was?
Sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't need a board E and R two days back to back?
Mm-hmm. But I was saying, with board of E and R, as long as I communicate with the tax department to make sure that they can, um, communicate with the taxpayer, to make sure they have everything that before they even come to us.
Yeah, but I wouldn't put them two days back to back. That's what I'm saying, because you remember how it went before, some people just need documentation, brought the documentation back, or took the documentation to the tax office, and it was resolved. But if we doing it back to back, there's no leeway for the people. You see what I'm saying? And then some people had an excuse that couldn't come, and it was a legitimate excuse or whatever, so we said the next time, but if we just go ahead and do, instead of doing a budget workshop later, just do it, um, go ahead and do the budget workshop, say the 16th or 17th, whatever day, and then do the E and R that this week. You see what I'm saying? Yeah.
Still two days, they can.
Right. And I give them two weeks to, uh, contact who they need to top contact and get if they need to go to an appraiser, or whoever they would need, bank, or whoever they need to go to, then they should have it within those two weeks of weekly.
What about board of E and R on the 3rd at one o'clock? Okay, so board of E and R is changing to, the first one is gonna be June 3rd. Yes, at one o'clock. Which one you moving, though? We gonna keep the 16th.
Just keep the same days, just, you just changing whatever the, the event does occur.
Yeah, I know we got two days, though. Remember 16th and the 17th, so we gonna count for one of those. We gonna move one, and, yeah, right. Which one you moving, though? Are you gonna, you gonna change 16th for the 17th? Okay, you put on your calendar and send it to me. Mm-hmm. Which one you moving?
She can be here, I, I'd rather her be here on a budget day, so she said 16th and 17th, so just put the budget day on 16th and 17th.
Okay.
What day do we eliminate? For E and R?
Board of E and R just moved to June 3rd.
Which one?
Which one?
The fr, the, the one from the 16th, mm-hmm.
So board of E and R, June 3rd.
June 3rd, board of E and R. Oh, I gotta take it off, hold on. Oh, you moved it already on the calendar. Okay. June 3rd, board of E and R, 1:00 PM. And the 16th is going to be the budget work session at four o'clock.
Yep, it can be early, because I ain't worked anymore.
Oh.
Budget work sessions you want to do?
In the evening. You said at four, okay.
Mm-hmm.
We still.
And so you keeping the 17th for board of E and R, for the second one. Okay. All right, got it.
Did Kelly just send all that out?
Mm-hmm.
Eliminate the board work session on the 2nd, which way?
Yeah, we don't have nothing.
Uh-huh, we take it off, uh-huh.
Second is our normal meeting.
Yeah, so the third would.